Get on this side, so we're good.
Okay. And YouTube is live? And we're good to go.
Okay, we are live.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the May 2021 meeting of the Town of Kent Planning Board. Would you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag
Of the United States of America And to the Republic Which stands One nation Under God Indivisible Liberty Justice For all
Thank you very much. And before we start, I just wanted to single out one of our members who's received a civilian award for humanitarian service, our own Stephen Wilhelm. Congratulations, Stephen.
Yes, congratulations, sir.
You're gone, Steve.
This is for my COVID work for the US Army.
Awesome.
Good job.
Appreciate it.
Uh, now I have to ask each of you, I'm sorry?
I said I got three pedals along with that.
Show and tell?
Why aren't you wearing them?
I do when we actually can see each other in person. It's coming.
First, I have to ask everybody if they are alone in their room or wherever they are in their corral, and that they have no one with them. And I'll start with Simon.
My name is Simon Carey, I'm a planning board member, and I'm alone.
And Giancarlo?
Hello, everyone. I am John Carlo Gattucci. I am a Kent Planning Board member, and I am alone.
And Stephen?
My name is Stephen Wilhelm, I'm a Kent Planning Board member.
And Hugo? I can't see everybody, so forgive me.
I'm Hugo German, Kent Planning Board member. I am alone.
Thank you. I don't think anyone else is here yet, am I right? I'm Phil Tolmak, Chairman of the Planning Board, and I'm also alone. Let us, and I just want to ask if anybody speaks, they need to identify themselves before they speak, please. Let's start with the minutes from, from April. Has everybody read the April minutes?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Thank you. And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
Did I leave anyone out?
Yourself.
And I vote aye, too. So it passes. Is there anyone in the audience representing Patterson Crossing who'd like to speak?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Cantelmo from Inside Engineering.
Please give us a brief rundown of why you're here.
Sure. Thank you for hearing us tonight. We were here this evening requesting an extension of our approval. As the board, I'm sure is aware, we were back to see, I think, back in November, if I remember correctly, requesting an extension at that time. As we indicated in our letter during that time, as well as our current letter for the request, the applicant continues to nay toward the Patterson Crossing project, but the headwinds associated with the COVID uncertainty, as well as the bank uncertainty, has delayed him beyond his desires, certainly. We are very hopeful that a brighter skies are ahead. I think we got good news out of the CDC today, which is great, but we still are struggling with the, the uncertainty associated with retail leasing and financing. So we're requesting another extension of the approvals from your board.
Right, thank you. Liz, do you want to weigh in here?
I do. Um, so I went back through the project file, and I created and emailed out to all of you, and also to Mr. Cantelmo and Mr. Kamarta, a draft resolution extension of approval for the Patterson Crossing project. I'm not going to bore you with the whole thing, because it is, let's see, fifteen pages long. It recounts a lot of the prior approvals, in particular, the one that the planning board just did. The planning board did extensions in November, two ninety-day extensions. And as you're aware, with other projects, once you've done a couple of extensions, you can't just keep doing those. So this is a draft resolution for approval, reapproval. So Mr. Cantelmo submitted a letter stating the reasons why, which he's just spoken about. And what I did was I updated the history of the project in the first several pages. And, um, let's see. And then, I don't know if you want me to just go ahead and walk you through some of the resolves. I can summarize, if you'd like. And then if you guys
Why don't you do that, Liz?
And I don't know, and then if you guys have questions, otherwise, we can move forward. So let's see. Some of the old material has to do with affirming a 2010 findings statement, noting the project hasn't materially changed since 2017, 2020, indicating that there's a freshwater wetland, steep slope protection and stormwater management, and zoning approvals, so three kinds of approvals, generally. One of the resolves of Planning Board would be granting reapproval with conditions of the amended site plan approval for Patterson Crossing retail development, as described herein and pursuant to code chapter seventy-seven zoning. Then it also talks about the Planning Board, again, waiving the maximum slope requirement of chapter sixty-six to allow slopes of fifty percent as may be approved by the board's engineer. Reapproval of condition, with conditions of the steep slope and erosion control permit. Reapproval with conditions of the freshwater wetland permit. And then it notes that these described approvals with conditions would be effective and run forward from July eighth, twenty twenty-one, because that's when this expires. But Mr. Cantelmo and Mr. Kamarta were forward-thinking, and they got a letter in right away. So it would have expired July eighth. And so what that means, in the, one of the last resolves, is that you would do the approval with conditions, and the approval would be void and would expire unless construction is started no later than July eighth, twenty twenty-two, and completed no later than July eighth, twenty twenty-three. And then it continues to go through all the conditions that were previously included with updates, as in the previous resolution about things that have been addressed. Sorry. And, uh, and then on the last page, there are attachments that go with this, for the project history. The November twenty twenty, uh, extension, the January twenty twenty reapproval, the November nine, two thousand seventeen approval, and information blasting pamphlet approved by the Planning Board on March fourteen, two thousand nineteen. Does anybody have any questions about this? No questions? And if the board doesn't have any questions?
To accept resolution.
Okay, so you would make up, somebody would have to make a motion in a second to approve.
I'll make that motion, Liz.
And a second?
I'll second it.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
And I vote aye, also.
Dennis is in, too.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis. And how do you vote, Dennis?
Aye.
Let it pass.
Okay.
That's that. Thank you very much, uh, to all the board members. And Stephen, congratulations on, on your reward and recognition. And Liz, thanks for your diligence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, Jeff.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Take care.
Uh, is there anyone here representing Kent Elementary School?
Uh, yes, good evening. John Weasey, Director of Facilities.
Hello. If you could briefly tell us why you're here.
I'm here seeking approval for the replacement of the sign that we currently have Kent schools. They're very old. One is damaged. And we're, we're looking to update, uh, to, uh, digital signs. The, the existing ones are letterboard style. They are backlit, but they're old letterboard style, and we're looking to upgrade.
Thank you. Uh, Liz?
Um, okay, so we, we reviewed this with Mr. Reese, and, um, I know that they have a ZBA variance for the size of the sign. I believe it's because the pedestal is the same, and the frame for the actual sign is the same, but they're replacing the, the guts of it, if I could say that. And the existing frame is four by eight, or thirty-two square feet, in a zoning district that only allows eight square feet, but they're, they're replacing. And so my understanding is they got a variance, uh, area variance for that. And has everybody seen the illustration of the sign?
Yeah, yes.
So.
Sorry, sorry, Liz. Did I hear that there's actually two signs, or is it one sign?
There are, there's two signs, uh, one in front of each school. Uh, they're both exactly the same.
Okay.
Oh, is the, is the one in the other school also a replacement?
It is. It's, it's exactly the same
Gotcha.
Size. Everything is the same. One is damaged. Uh, the other is very old, um, damaged from time. One is damaged form.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about this? Bruce or John, do you have comments?
No, sir.
No, I do not.
Do we have to vote on this, I assume?
Yeah.
Hey, we're gonna have to waive a public hearing?
I don't think we have public hearings for sign permits, but I think you should go ahead and waive it if there is one. And I think you can approve this conditioned upon compliance with the variance and the material submitted. And, you know, I realize that the map that I have that was submitted, it doesn't show the second sign clearly, so if you could just provide us another map that shows both of them.
Sure.
Be great. Otherwise, that is very simple. Approval of an, of, uh, uh, new sign content in two existing pedestals and frames located on school property. Variance is for area.
I'll make a
Can I get a motion to accept these proposals as Liz has just outlined?
I'll make that motion, and also add in there the waiving the public hearing, just in case. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And a second. And Stephen, how do you vote?
Vote aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
Dennis? Giancarlo?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So it passes.
Thank you very much, everybody.
You're welcome.
Makes the top of the hill look real nice.
Is there anyone here representing Patel Laundromat?
Well, they withdrew.
Well, let's see if anybody showed up. Did anybody show up?
See anybody here in the YouTube comments?
My understanding from, uh, an email that Jack Correll sent and that Vera forwarded is that they're not going to proceed with their application, either the Patel matter or the best discount. Um, but I really, they should have, um, formal withdrawal letters. And I, you know, I know that Bruce and I, and I think John had started working on reviews. Um, Bruce and I issued ours, and I was rushing to try to get it out, because, you know, so the board could have some material before, the day before, and, uh, then found this out first thing, um, this morning. So the timing was unfortunate.
We'll punish them later.
They will confess, they, they saved me a little bit of work, because I came in early this morning to get my memo finished, and, uh, thankfully, I didn't have to.
So I
So let's move on to Benita's.
Okay, just one more quick thing. Um, Vera and I spoke about hanging on to the escrow until the bills are covered, and then
Yes, please.
Yeah.
We'll do anything
Yeah, I wouldn't re, I wouldn't release them anyway till, you know, for a few months.
Is there anyone here from Benita's property?
Yes.
Just briefly tell us why you're here. Thank you.
Go ahead, James.
Hi, good evening, all. Uh, my name is James Forey. I am a project manager for Orange County Pools and Spas. Jacqueline is, uh, seeking a, uh, permit approval for an in-ground swimming pool installation at her property at twelve Barrett Hill Road, Carmel, New York.
Thank you. Who would like to speak about this?
Uh, this is John Andrews. Uh, I am the engineer to the planning board. Mr. Chairman, if you will, I, I can speak about it. You should have a memo dated May twelfth. As the gentleman said, the, the project proposes construction of an in-ground twenty-by-forty pool. Uh, it's in an already fenced portion of the west side of the property. Uh, the plan reflects a soil removal and the amount of about a hundred and eighty cubic yards. Uh, the site disturbance is under the five thousand square foot threshold. However, it is removing more than the hundred cubic yard threshold. It therefore needs an erosion and sediment control permit. Bruce and I took a, uh, made a field visit on Wednesday to observe conditions and determine the suitability of the site. The loco, the location for the pool is open. There's no trees. It's, it's kind of generally level. It slopes down a little bit toward the neighborhood, to the north. It slopes up a little bit to the, to the, uh, the west, but there's some bedrock there as well. I provided you with some pictures. It's an unremarkable rear yard, and no disrespect intended. From an engineering perspective, it doesn't appear to pose any significant, uh, potential impacts. Basically, it's a relatively minor project in scope. There, it, the only thing is, the soil removal is above the threshold. The area disturbance occurs within an already fenced area. It looks like it's been recently disturbed in, in the past to, you know, kind of enhance things for some grass. There's no real trees to be removed. The area is level and accessible. The, the existing gravel drive that sits out there is, is really situated to provide reasonable access to the rear yard. So there's not a lot of motion that has to be made to put this in. Um, Bruce and I discussed this in the field, and I think it is our recommendation that the planning board waive the requirements of, uh, sixty-six dash six B of the Kent Town Code. And in lieu thereof, require the applicant to provide a two-scale, uh, hand-drawn dimension site plan using the previously submitted property survey as the base map. This can be a, a relatively legible hand-drawn sketch with notes. The plan should have the following information. The exact location and size of the proposed pool with dimensioned offsets, complying with the necessary setbacks. You're going to have to check zoning and make sure they can get the pool within the required setbacks. The location, size, material, and dimensions of any patio surrounding the pool. The location, size, and component listing for the pool equipment, and heater, if any, with fuels, type, storage, and method of storage. The final fence location, material, and height, and the location type of any erosion and sediment control measures. Based on the site visit that Bruce and I conducted, probably really only need, um, some silt fence along the northerly property line, and perhaps a simple stabilized construction entrance within the existing, um, gravel area. And then the limits of any proposed disturbance. Obviously, you, you, you gotta make a little bit of an omelet, so they're going to destroy, disturb more than a forty-by-sixty area, or a twenty-by-forty area, I should say. So we need those limits kind of there, and then a note on the method of restoration. I imagine they're going to topsoil seed and mulch. We prepared a, a simple bond estimate. It, it amounts to approximately one thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, we would, uh, recommend the approval by, that this be offered for approval by the town board. The security remains in full force and effect, uh, until it's released, period of not less than two years uh, from the date of final acceptance or other such certification that the work has been completed and, and is satisfactorily, um, in place. The applicant is responsible for payment of the erosion control inspections. That requires a thousand dollar deposit. Now, even though the activities qualify for a review under the erosion and sediment control law, it's relatively minor, and the public hearing may be waived uh, by the planning board in accordance with, uh, sixty-six dash six F. We would recommend that that public hearing be waived. This is a relatively de minimis project. And we would further recommend that the remaining project review be referred to the planning board consultants to be handled administratively. And then the only, the last is the overall caveat, that when you respond to this memo, you, you provide your answers in writing as well as the sketch. Bruce, is that pretty clear?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, John. Good evening, everyone. Bruce Barber, Town Environmental Consultant. Just a couple of things to add, uh, that John and I spoke about. Um, if you could be, uh, kind enough to locate the septic system on that same map that John alluded to. Want to make sure that there's no interference either by the construction or during the construction, uh, for the septic, as well as what we would call a potential expansion area in the event that septic system malfunctioned. We want to make sure that the pool is not going to be put in a location that a potential septic system repair or expansion would be needed. The location of the well on the property, any, any utilities that are going to be going to the pool, pool equipment, pool heating, elements, et cetera, should be shown on the plan as well. And, um, I'm sorry, I don't remember the gentleman from Orange County Pool. Your name again, sir?
James Forey.
James, um, both John and I noted, and I'm sure you did as well, some fair amount of, uh, bedrock poking up through the surface of the property.
Yes, I do.
So I'm sure you're cognizant that you may need to do some rock chipping, et cetera. I encourage you to talk to Bill Walters, our building inspector, early on in the process, in terms of what he's going to need in terms of, of permits or anything along those lines. Okay? But I concur with John, uh, and recommend to the board that the public hearing on this could be certainly waived, and it could be handled on an administrative track.
Liz, do you have anything to add?
None.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
No.
No.
Uh, okay, um, John, do you want to these, uh,
Yeah, I don't want to think.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah. What is the, uh, property setback in the water, in a pool? Is it, is it twenty feet?
I'm sorry, you broke up during your question.
Yeah, yeah, I, I got it. We need to know that the, uh, distance from the property line to the, uh, edge of water in the pool is not going to violate the required property line setback. But that's one of them. We have requested that. I'm not sure what it is. I, I don't know whether it's twenty feet or not.
It's, uh, it's fifteen feet.
Sixteen. Oh, okay.
Fifteen, one, five. For swimming pools.
One, five, fifteen feet. Okay.
Yeah, from, from property line or buildings, it's fifteen feet.
Okay, yeah. It's gonna look like it's gonna be a problem, but we, we gotta make sure that everything's gonna be okay.
Yeah, I think, I think Dennis, what we're looking to see is a survey with the scaled location and dimensions of the pool and associated equipment to make sure that all the setbacks are required, and if not, it's going to have to go to the zoning board, of course. Or they'll have to change the location of the pool to, to comply.
I, I think there's enough room back there, judging by the way, the dimensions that we did, that were on the sketch that we got, and, and our and our quick look, that they ought to be able to adjust that and set it just where they need it, and meet all the setbacks. It, it, it's pretty, there's, there's some room for float out there in that backyard. It, it's not a huge backyard, but, um, given the size of the pool, it should work.
I agree.
John, mind us of the waivers, there's the public hearing, and then another one.
Well, the, the first is, um, that we would recommend waiving the requirements of Town Code Section sixty-six dash six point B. That's the erosion and sediment control law, and that's that litany of requirements that you waive all those standard requirements in lieu of providing, uh, a two-scale hand-drawn dimension site plan with the information outlined in our review. That's number one. Number two, we, we recommend that you accept the bond estimate of twelve hundred and refer that to the, the town board as may be necessary. And number three, we recommend that you, um, waive the requirement for a public hearing in this matter. And then finally authorize, uh, this to be handled administratively by the planning board consultants.
Thank you, John. Can I get a motion to accept all of those waivers and motions?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Uh, Dennis?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So it all passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Hold on just a second, folks. James, if I may?
Yes.
Just to be clear, the next steps would be to take the memo that Mr. Andrews has prepared as well as the comments from tonight's meeting and provide the responses to Vera Patterson in the planning department so that we can work our way through those remaining open items and finish the project up from that perspective. And then you can apply for the building permit. Concurrent with that, though, I would speak with Mr. Walters in the billing department about the requirements for the billing permit as well as any rock removal requirements. So you can move this forward expeditiously. So if any questions, please get in time, contact with Vera Patterson. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Bye. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing Putnam Nursing and Rehabilitation Center?
Liz, you want to help? Yes, I do, because, um, Dave Schlosser had a conflicting meeting and, uh, he had informed that he probably wouldn't be able to attend. So I prepared a resolution for the board's consideration and emailed it out today. And it's considerably shorter than Patterson Crossing. And, um, I could just go through it and, uh, give you the fine points and then you can consider voting or asking questions.
Throw it on it, without that. I'm just joking. Yes, please go through.
Oh, I'm so deflated. All right, I'll be quick. So basically, the first few pages are a recap of what the project is and all the review that we did. And that the board did all these steps to complete the environmental, state environmental quality review and recounted, um, that the planning board, received a request for reapproval on April sixteenth. And basically, the resolves go as follows. The planning board is mindful of the reasons of the delays related to COVID and effort to fulfill the conditions of the prior approval. There haven't been any project changes since the December ten, twenty twenty extensions were granted. Let's see. And I go through and talk about the freshwater wetlands and, uh, steep slopes and erosion control permit. And then near the end, the planning board grants reapproval with conditions to the proposed site plan, wetland permit and steep slope and erosion control plan approvals as depicted on the plans and maps listed herein, noting previously granted two ninety-day extensions of December two thousand nineteen final approval with conditions. And that that would have, the extensions granted thereafter would have expired on June eighth, twenty twenty-one. Be it further resolved, the planning board grants the abro, the above described reapprovals with conditions effective and running forward from June eighth, twenty twenty-one. So that any future expiration would occur one year from June eighth, twenty twenty-one. Let's see. And then there's a restatement of all the conditions, which I have to say, a lot of them have been addressed. But we're going to just write, do a write-up all at once. And then the end, that this reapproval will be void if construction is not started within one year of the date of planning board approval, which would be forward from, I say, June eighth. Yes. And then if they can't get everything started by June eighth, twenty twenty-two, they would have to come back for two ninety-day extensions, but hopefully that won't happen. That's it.
Thank you, Liz.
The board can make a motion to approve based on this resolution.
Thank you. Bruce or John, do you have anything to add here?
No, sir.
No, I do not.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
No.
No.
Get a motion to accept this resolution. Adopt the resolution.
I'll make that motion. Do we adopt the res-? Yeah, we adopt the res-.
I'll second it.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Jen Carlo?
Aye.
And I vote aye too. So it passes.
Good to go.
So we go to Dolphin Studio. Is there anyone here representing Dolphin Studio? Liz?
Um, there's nothing to do here but to refund the escrow. Nice and simple. And Vera, I assume whatever's been paid is paid.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to accept the ex- escrow or to return the escrow to Dolphin Studio?
I'll make that motion, Phil.
And a second, please.
I'll second it.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Stephen?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Jen Carlo?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Liz, anything else on Dolphin? Then is there anyone here representing New York State Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation?
No, and I can tell you why.
Why?
Please.
So, um.
Never conflicting meeting, huh?
Yeah, no. Basically, what happened is the planning board received a secret lead agency, uh, circulation. And it had to be done and sent in before May thirteenth. And so at the workshop, we discussed this. And you gave me the authority to go out and fill out the form, which I did, identifying Phil as the chairman and indicating that they needed to do some approvals and I attached two code chapters as per my cohorts, um, Bruce and John, and I emailed it to them. And that's that.
Thank you.
And this, this basically do, this basically acknowledges that we're, uh, in favor of, uh, SHPO being, uh, lead agency on this, uh, phragmities control, right?
Well, we're consenting to that, yes.
Yeah.
In other words, saying, we concur with them acting as lead, we answered yes. And under permit or approval required, we said yes, and we, and we told them that they, we basically handed them the code chapters so they can figure that.
Let them have the headaches.
Gentlemen, any questions?
How they're gonna do this? Do, do we know how they're gonna implement their control measures? Are they gonna try to suffocate the stuff or chemical or what?
Chemical.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, they're gonna use a relatively recently tried herbicide, uh, Dennis, to control the phragmities and it's going to be done over a phasing period, which is way, the way you have to attempt at least to control phragmities.
Oh, it's awful stuff. It's just, it's just terrible stuff.
Yep. Oh, yeah, it's, it's pretty, pretty, uh, pretty aggressive and very difficult to eradicate.
How did that, how did that activity that, uh, I can't remember what agency it was, but they were trying to do it over on in the Hudson River, they were capping the, uh, with that, uh, black plastic to suffocate it?
Yeah, that's another way in the emergent areas that it's tried. See, phragmities is going to be a symptom of disturbance anywhere, uh, in the soil. It rapidly colonizes exposed soil. It also is a somewhat emergent species. It likes to get wet feet, not completely be inundated. So when you put the black plastic over it, when it's in the water, Dennis, it shades it to the degree that, um, it, it will not grow, but that takes a period of several years of shading to really see a big difference. The stuff is incredibly difficult, um, in that way to eradicate. And that's more of a selective area around beaches, around docks, around areas that are used. They, that technique's used. If we could just find some goats to go in the water to eat it, that would be great.
Any other questions?
Good to go.
Below the line. I can't hear anything.
Sorry, I was going through some stuff and I didn't want to make noise. So, during Kent Elementary signs, I was blindsided by the fact that he said he had signs at two locations. And in the middle of the discussion, I thought, well, did he mean a two-sided sign? Because the submittal the planning board received was for one sign that was two-sided. And apparently, and I've been emailing, um, with Mr. Reese in the background. He did intend two signs at two locations, which, for which we don't have the information of the second location. Obviously, you guys are familiar with the Kent Elementary School. Are there two existing signs there now?
Yeah.
Yeah. One's for KPS, one KES.
Okay, so I just want to put back on the record that, uh, to be clear. So there are two signs being replaced with two, two-sided, displays. And you guys are familiar with the location and you're okay with that?
Well, Liz, that's exactly why I was asking at the time. I was under the impression it was one sign from the workshop, but.
Yeah, he was, yeah, he was saying one sign before.
Yeah.
Well, the application materials only show one sign.
Right.
And apparently, go ahead.
I do know where the other one is and that's not a problem, but it's just that I didn't expect. I thought there was only one.
So did I. So we've been emailing. He explained to me that at the ZBA meeting, he asked about the second sign. So apparently, and maybe Bill, you can jump in here, they got variances for both?
Yes. They got variances for both. They, the original application was for one sign. They planned on, they planned on coming back for the second. And the, the ZBA just said there's no change. The signs have been there forever. They're the same size. And the, the ZBA granted them for both signs. So they don't have to come back and do it again.
Okay, and I don't have a problem with that. You know, I, I just want to get the record clear. So the planning board knows there are two signs at two known locations, existing sign locations, two two-sided signs. Each of them got variances for area. And I just want to make sure that that was clear to you when you made your approval. And if you want to quickly redo a motion to say that, you can, or we can leave it the way it was.
We leave it the way it was. I think we mentioned two.
Yeah, I think we leave it the way it was, because we did clear up that there was two signs just before we made the motion.
Okay. Good. All done.
Is everything, uh, on board with that?
Yes.
All right, yes, let's do it, Liz.
You're done.
Thank you. Shall we go below the line? Holly Property. Who's working?
Uh, you submitted, Mr. Chairman, a, a copy of, of the stipulation from the, um, attorney. Uh, you asked for comments. I issued my comments. I noted an email from the attorney this evening that apparently you forwarded my comments on to him. Um, and that he would be working to incorporate them. I don't know whether Liz or Bruce issued comments. But, um, I know he's, he's starting to amend it with respect to my comments, which I did copy also to Liz and Bruce as well as yourself.
And I had, I had a brief discussion today with Jeff Battistoni because I didn't have a chance to review it because I was busy writing resolutions and, uh, he indicated that he got John's comments and I remember Bruce, John and I kind of having a discussion that we need to have the existing units that are on the site quantified clearly. And then for the proposed units, um, to, uh, make sure the quantity of those is clear so that we have a clear limit. What's the total resulting development? So it's really just clarification and quantifying things, I think.
And, and for me, I finished up the comments, uh, late this afternoon. Going to be sending it out to Jeff, uh, tomorrow sometime. There were a few environmental, uh, aspects to that, uh, needed classifications Liz is suggesting. And also a couple, uh, that were absent that I'm including for Jeff's review. That ought to go out tomorrow.
Right. And, and there is no action for the planning board to take anyway. Uh, Jeff is going to revise the stipulation and then I believe, I don't, I don't know if the town board has to take any action at a later meeting or if it's something that ends up becoming filed later related to a town board action. That wasn't clear to me, so. But there's nothing for the planning board to do tonight.
And gentlemen, as soon as I get the finished stipulations back from Jeff Battistoni, I'm going to forward them to all of you, just so you know. And so we don't have to do anything on that right now, Liz, right?
No.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions about it?
No.
Then keep going, Liz.
Okay. So Best Discount Depot, we, we have received an email that they are withdrawing, but we need a letter uh, signed by the applicant. Kent Corp, Mazada, I spoke to Adam from Jeff Cantelmo's office today about what's needed on that. Same with G A D F. Same person, uh, different buildings. Uh, Route fifty-two Development, nothing new. Kent Development Commercial Lot. I see emails that I haven't been able to look at about more aspects of conditions that are being addressed. So we'll keep moving on that.
Just to, just to fill in, I think Vera will, will confirm that we finally got all the executed bonds and, and associated paperwork, Vera?
Yes, we did. And I forwarded it to the town board today.
And what I had done, um, as a consequence of getting those bonds, I issued the, uh, MS four acceptance on behalf of the town so that they can move ahead and file for their, their, their DEC stormwater permit. And, and it's, I think that should be wrapping up. I think I didn't have any outstanding issues. I think that the, the bonds and the associated paperwork were the largest outstanding issue and that seems to be almost fully resolved.
Thank you.
Let's see. Kent Self Storage, nothing there. We would need, uh, we did a reapproval, right? And we need a submittal. And then Rodriguez, that's Bruce or John?
Nothing new.
Nothing new.
Renee?
Nothing new either.
No, not yet.
Vidialo?
Vidialo. Uh, we discussed it last, uh, at the workshop. Uh, Vera was kind enough to reach out to the engineer, Eric at Insight. He did respond. He is aware that he needs to get us updated drawings, but his message was somewhat cryptic in that they're looking at moving the garage again. I think that's the way I read it, Vera.
Yeah, I got, I got the same impression.
So I, I, I think we're, we're enduring an exercise of, uh, an exercise of trying to put a fork in Jell-O. Um, the closer we get to it, the more it skitters away. Um, so, uh, we can expect a submittal and I would think depending upon what that submittal reveals, it may be back to you folks. I don't know if Bruce and I would be inclined to handle another modification administratively without first uh, bringing the matter to your attention.
Right.
And, uh, Town of Kent Mining Law?
Um, we have not heard. We submitted a proposal to the town board. My understanding, it was, it was going to be entertained at a meeting. Um, whether it was or not, I- Um, whether it was or not, I have not heard. Um, and Bruce and I had talked about it, and we were both gonna try to independently reach out to the supervisor to see if there is a current status or.
I did see it. Uh, they did discuss it at the town board meeting. I saw it on TV the other night. And um, I, you know, it seemed like they had no objections to it, but they're, they're, they're getting a grant or something to pay half of it or something.
Okay.
But they, but they did say, you know, talk about it.
Okay, I'll send, uh, what I will do is I'll, I'll send it, an email to the um supervisor. I'll see, see the, the, the board and, and my fellow consultants, and, and I'll just inquire as to the status and, and um how she would like us to proceed in that regard.
Sounds good, John.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, does anyone have a question or a comment to make? Consultants, anything?
No, sir.
I'm all tired of writing resolutions.
No, you, the only thing you do need to approve the March minute is chill.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the March minute? Anybody?
Come on, Hugo.
And a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
And Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hugo.
Aye.
Simon.
Aye.
Giancarlo.
Aye.
Stephen.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. So that passes two. And now can I get a motion to close the meeting unless somebody objects? A motion, please? And a second?
I'll second.
And Giancarlo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Simon.
Aye.
Hugo.
Aye.
Stephen.
Aye.
Dennis.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The meeting is closed. Take care, everybody. Thank you all for coming.
Night, all.
Good night, everybody. Take care, all.
Take care.